I'd like to call to order the West Covina Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 13th at 7:02 PM. I want to thank everybody for coming out today. Our air conditioning lasts, so you can be cool while you're in here. But if you plan to speak tonight, would you please fill out one of these pink cards that are up here and hand it in to Mr. Anderson so we know who you are and what you want to talk about? Okay, thank you. Would you please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Stand and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Vias, Commissioner Menefee, Commissioner Castellanos, Commissioner Blackburn, Chairman Holtz.
Present. Any addition or for the meeting of regular meeting minutes of April 22nd? Any changes, additions? If not, they stand so approved. At this point in time, we're going to have election of officers for the upcoming year. But before we do that, I would like to publicly say I'd like to thank the staff for their support this past year. It's been a pleasure working with you as a chairman, and I'd also like to thank my fellow commissioners for all their support at this time. So with that being said, we have a motion for the chairman for the upcoming year. Any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Menefee.
Do you have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Vallis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, we didn't have a motion for the...
Well, actually, now that he's been elected, you turn over the gavel to him, and he runs the meeting from here on out.
We don't have to do a motion for the assist, or he'll take that.
Correct.
Okay. I will turn the gavel over to Commissioner Menefee.
Thank you, Commissioner Holtz. Let's have a motion now for vice chairman.
Motion for Commissioner Blackburn.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Terry Five-O.
We have chairman and vice chairman. You want to switch around?
Yep.
Okay. Excuse us for just a moment. This is the time when any member of the public may speak to the commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the commission relating to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters included on the agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. For all oral communications, the chairperson may impose reasonable limitations on public comments to assure an orderly and timely meeting. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the planning commission and the staff's ability to respond to public comments at this meeting. Thus, your comments may be agendized for a future meeting or referred to staff. The commission may ask questions for clarification if desired at this time. By policy of the commission, oral communications at this time on the agenda is limited to a total of 15 minutes. Persons who are not afforded the opportunity to speak at this time may do so later on the agenda under continuation of oral communications. The next item under public hearing, item two. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have anyone here who wishes to address us on oral communications not related to any of the issues tonight? All right, hearing on, thank you. All right. Item two, general planned amendment number 1304, East Hills Master Plan Revision Number 13, Zone Change Number 1304, Precise Plan Number 1307, Tentative Track Map Number 72579, Tree Removal Permit Number 1309. The applicant is Brandywine Homes of Brett Whitehead. The location is 3228, 3238, and 3244 Holt Avenue. The request is to develop three contiguous parcels with 48 two-story townhomes. This request consists of a general plan amendment from residential suburban to medium residential, a revision to the East Hills Master Plan amending the land use designation from planned development residential suburban to medium residential, a zone change to change the zoning from residential agriculture area district three to a specific plan, a precise plan to allow the construction of 48 townhome units, a tentative tract map for the subdivision of the property to create residential condominium units, and a tree removal permit to remove 44 trees. At this time, we'd like to hear the staff report.
Senior Planner Fabiola Wong will be presenting that report.
Good evening, chairman and members of the planning commission, as well as community members, staff members. The applicant is proposing to consolidate three contiguous residential lots to construct a 48 townhome unit project. Just three parcels total 5.3 acres, and two out of the three parcels are developed with single-family homes that will be demolished as part of the project. The applicant is proposing a specific plan. This specific plan will allow the 48 attached townhomes at a density of 9.2 units per acre. The project proposes the removal of 37 trees and the preservation of an existing streambed that runs through the project site. The development is proposed as a gated community with vehicular access from Holt Avenue. The project will provide adequate open space areas for the use of the residents within the development. The applicant made contact with the neighbors surrounding the site. Letters were mailed in March of 2014 informing the residents of the proposed project. Staff and the applicant met with some of the neighbors on April 16th here in City Hall. In addition, the applicant met in person with some of the neighbors. A log of their community outreach is attached to the staff report as Attachment Six. Surrounding line uses include the Walnut Creek Wash and commercial uses to the north along Garvey Avenue, single-family residential units to the south, single-family homes that are zoned a specific plan which is Creek Side, and single-family to the west. Notices were mailed to a total of 102 property owners and occupants within 300-foot radius of the project site. The initial study mitigated negative declaration was circulated from March 31st through April 29th of 2014. It was a 30-day review period. The State of California Department of Fish and Wildlife is our responsible agency since they have jurisdiction over the stream that runs through the site. The project site is comprised of, as I said before, three contiguous parcels. Those are 3238, which is developed with a single-family home that was built back in 1947, 3244 parcel, Holt Avenue, that is currently developed also with a family, a single-family home that was built in 1981, and the northern parcel, 32... I'm sorry, 3228 that has a lot of mature trees, including California live oaks, and is currently vacant. The project requires the granting of the following entitlements as determined indicated: a general plan amendment to amend the land use designation of the general plan from residential suburban to medium residential, the East Hills Master Plan Revision to amend the land use designation of the master plan from residential suburban to medium residential, zone change to change the zoning classification from residential agriculture to a specific plan number 28, precise plan for the architectural site plan in compliance with development standards, a tentative tract map to consolidate the three parcels and create one parcel for the development of the 48 units, and a tree removal permit to remove the 37 trees. The current general plan land use designation that surrounds the site, or existing actually land use designation, is residential suburban which allows for density of 2.1 to 4 units per acre. The requested general plan amendment would amend the land use to medium residential which allows density of 8.1 to 15 units per acre. The proposed project proposes a density of 9.2 dwelling units per acre. As you can see on the slide, the general plan land use designation to the east and southeast residential suburban that allows again 2.1 to 4 units per acre, the Los Angeles County Flood Control Channel which is located to the north of the site, the channel serves as a separation between the general plan land use designation residential suburban and the commercial general plan land use designation neighborhood and service commercial which is along Garvey Avenue. Across Holt Avenue, the general plan land use designation is residential low-medium which allows a density of 4.1 to 8 units per acre, and that's the project located to the east which is Creek Side. The project ISO includes the amendment to the East Hill Master Plan. The Master Plan Amendment will change the land use designation from residential suburban to medium residential which is the same designation as the general plan. The project is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan. Goal number two of the housing element calls to provide a variety of housing types to accommodate all economic segments of the city. Policy 2.4 provides, calls for a high-quality housing for current and future residents at all income level to achieve a balanced community. Goal three of the housing element minimize the impact of government constraints on housing production and affordability. Policy 3.1 calls to support innovative public, private, and nonprofit efforts toward the development of affordable housing. Number four, promote equal housing opportunities for all residents, and policy 4.4 encourage housing construction or alteration to meet the needs of residents with special needs such as large families, the elderly, and disabled. And goal five of the housing element calls to identify adequate sites to achieve a housing variety. And policy 5.1 provides for a range of residential development types in West Covina, including low-density, single-family homes, moderate-density townhomes, higher-density multifamily units, and residential-commercial mixed use in order to address the city's shares of regional housing needs. In addition, land use element number five calls the city to continue to assure that residential development conforms to the policy and actions specified in the housing element. As such, the proposed project is consistent with the general plan. The subject property is currently zoned residential agricultural which is area district three. This zoning designation allows for residential development with a minimum lot size of 14,400 square feet. Development of lots with, a development with lots of the minimum lot size will allow three units per acre at the site. As you know, most of the cities within the San Gabriel Valley are built-out cities, so most of the new opportunities for housing will come to be from lot consolidation and development of underutilized lots such as commercial lots or industrial lots. In this case, this is how this project is being proposed, is basically consolidating three fairly large residential lots. The proposed specific plan proposes lot coverage of 60% in the specific plan. However, the development has been designed to cover 23% of the entire site. Therefore, staff has added a condition that the specific plan only allows a maximum lot coverage or site coverage of 25%. That way, you will ensure that the project will remain as is being proposed today and you're considering today. Access to the project will be provided via gated entrance off of Holt Avenue at the southwestern portion of the project site. Which will be riding here. A network of driving aisles provides the interior circulation, and a bridge over the streambed will provide access to the units located along Oak Knoll. So here's the bridge that will provide access to these 13 units. The main drive aisle will continue through the site providing access to the dwelling units along the route. The tree survey prepared for this project identified a total of 101 trees on the project site. The tree survey shows that there is a total of 97 significant trees consisting of live oaks, California sycamores, and black oak. A total of 36 oak trees and one sycamore are located within the proposed development footprint. The tree removal permit request is to allow the removal of these 37 trees, and additional seven oak trees will be impacted by the proposed development as there will be paving within the drip lines of those trees. Therefore, staff has included a condition of approval that requires the applicant to protect those trees during construction and by placing barriers or anything else, you know, maybe using hand tools instead of, you know, other tools that might damage those drip lines. The applicant is also required to mitigate the removal of trees at a ratio of two to one, and the replacement trees must be at least 24-inch box trees. And if the site does not have adequate space to accommodate all the trees, the applicant will be required to pay an in-lane fee into the city's tree fund. The streambed runs from the southeast corner of the property and continues till reaching the northwest property line. The streambed contains riparian vegetation that includes mature trees that will be preserved. The streambed divides the site, and a total of 35 units will be located north of the streambed and 13 units to the south of it. 35 surface parking spaces will be located on the northern portion of the site, including two handicap parking spaces, and a total of 13 surface parking spaces will be provided on the southern portion of the project, including one handicap parking space. The dwelling units are two-story attached units. The attached units are in a combination of three plexes, five plexes, and six plexes. A total of two, three plexes, six, five plexes, and six plexes will be developed for a total of 10 buildings. The units along Holt Avenue have been designed to face the Holt Avenue, and which will provide a better relationship to the street, and also it will be compatible with the single-family in the surrounding area. The applicant clustered the units in order to preserve the streambed at the site and minimize the removal of trees. The site contains, as I mentioned before, mature oak trees and other trees that provide a unique character to the site and also to the neighborhood. The State of California Department of Fish and Wildlife has jurisdiction over the streambed. So if the city approves the project, the applicant will continue to work with this agency to obtain a streambed alteration agreement and meet whatever conditions and mitigations that they require of the project. It should be noted that the applicant could have undergrounded the streambed and have more area to allow for more unit, but instead they decided that it will be a unique feature to worth of preserving at the site. Therefore, he believes that preserving the streambed and riparian vegetation is a more sensitive development in terms of aesthetics, compatibility with the character of the neighborhood, and a great amenity for the future residents of the project. Therefore, clustering minimizes the impacts to trees and allows for the preservation of the streambed along with the riparian vegetation. The project will be fenced by a 42-inch metal row iron, and I should probably share the other elevations which are also here. So the 42-inch metal fence with pilasters is going to be installed on the front elevation, and a six-foot tall block wall will be installed on the easterly and southerly property lines, which is along Oak Knoll Avenue as well. On the westerly property line, a six-foot total metal fence will be installed. In addition, a six-foot tall metal fence will be installed to protect and delineate the streambed at the request of the State of California Department of Fish and Wildlife. As you can see by the elevations, the project proposes a modern Spanish architectural design. The elevation incorporates wall projections, arch, greases, windows, wood shutters, ornamental rough, row iron elements, and an arcade entrance on some of the units to provide a visual interest. The finished materials include concrete tile roof, a smooth stock of finish, and a variety of earth-ton colors. The combination of materials and architectural movement helps reduce the scale en massing of the proposed structures. The color schemes for the units are variation of beige, brown, and terracotta colors. The project proposes three- and four-bedroom units and three different floor plans, I'm sorry, four different floor plans. One, two, and three will be three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. Plan four will be four bedrooms and three bedroom, three, I'm sorry, four bedrooms and three bedrooms, I can say bathrooms. The smaller unit will be 1,535 square feet of habitable space, and the larger unit will be 1,949 square feet of habitable space. All units providing attached two-car garage. A total of five units will be handicap accessible, so the lot requires that a minimum of five units be provided, and that's what the applicant is proposing. Each unit, as I said, will provide a two-car garage, and also inside the garage there will be a pad area for their trash. 16 units which are building, 16 units will provide also a driveway which allows for two uncovered parking spaces for a total of four spaces on those 16 units. So although most units will have two-car garage, some of them would allow for parking of four vehicles. The West Covina Municipal Code requires two parking spaces per unit for multifamily residential and one parking space for every four dwelling units for multifamily residential condominium projects. The guest parking spaces also are required to be located within 150 feet of the unit and dispersed throughout the development. Based on the requirements of the municipal code, the project is required to provide a minimum of two covered parking spaces in a total of 12 guest parking spaces. The project provides an attached two-car garage per unit. 16 units will provide an additional two uncovered parking spaces, and a total of 48 surface uncovered parking spaces are provided for the use of all the units. Therefore, an average of 3.7 parking spaces is being provided per unit. Single families are required to provide four parking spaces, two covered, two uncovered. In addition, a condition of approval is included in the precise plan and tentative tract map requiring that the CCNR state that the parking or storage of recreational vehicles be prohibited. In addition, the applicant has agreed to incorporate a bulbous or curb extension on both sides of the project entrance to provide a safer movement when a vehicle is exiting the project. The curb extension requires a portion of the street on both sides of the entrance on Holt Avenue to be painted red to allow for better visibility. A total of three community open spaces are being provided. The central picnic lot area, it's 4.8 acres, which is right here, and that will provide a barbecue grill, two picnic tables, and shade structure just south of the hot lot place structure. The size of the central picnic area, like I said before, is 4.8 acres. The western picnic area, 0.48, yes, I'm sorry. The western picnic area, this will be a paved area, and that will be located right here, and that will provide picnic tables and a barbecue adjacent to the turf area in the south, southern picnic area, which is right here. It's 0.19 acres, and this also will provide picnic table and barbecue. The preliminary landscape also indicates that there's going to be quite a bit of trees, if I counted correctly, there were about 17 Tipuana Tipu trees and about 11 African sumac, a combination of African sumac, Australian willow, New Zealand, and other type of trees planted along the Holt Avenue. In addition, there will be other trees that will be planted throughout the site area. Approximately 2.42 acres, or about 43% of the site, will remain as open space in some sort, in some sort of form, whether it's going to be grass, it's going to be passive recreational areas, landscape setbacks, and landscape pockets throughout the project site. The homeowners association will be responsible also for maintaining all of those areas. The tract map that is being requested, as indicated before, will be to allow the construction of 48 units. Therefore, one parcel will be created with airspace rights. As part of the project, the applicant is required a variable width street dedication that includes a portion of Oak Knoll Drive contiguous to the project site. The dedication must provide a 60-foot wide right-of-way on Oak Knoll, allowing 40 feet from curb to curb. Since the city does not have immediate plans to widen that side of that street, Oak Knoll, the applicant requested to landscape the dedication area, so that will soften the six-foot tall wall that will be along Oak Knoll. The project site is also located within the flood zone X, which identifies the possibility of flooding during a major storm. Zone X requires the structures to be elevated to account for potential flooding. Therefore, the paths of the homes will be raised to minimize flood risk. The applicant is proposing five phases for the project. The first phase being completion of onsite and offsite improvement, and anticipate completing that in September 2014. Phase two will be issuance of building permits for the model homes, and that will be three model homes located right in here, those three units. And phase three will be issuance of building permits for the constructions of, and I can't see which buildings those will be, but I think they're the, if I'm not mistaken, are the orange color. And those are anticipated to be completed April 2015. And phase four will be the construction of 13 units, and I believe that will be the units along Oak Knoll. And phase five, the issuance of building permits for the buildings located along Holt Avenue for a total of 16 units. They anticipate completing that in August of 2015. Based on the phases of the project, it will take less than two years to complete the construction of all the units. An initial study was prepared as required by SEQA. Impact Sciences prepared the initial study mitigated negative declaration for the project as part of the environmental assessment. There were a few technical studies that were prepared, and those are included in the appendices of the MND. The initial study found that the proposed project could have significant impact on the environment in relation to aesthetics, biological resources, cultural resources, geology, and soils, hostor-in-hostor materials, hydrology, and water quality, noise, and transportation and traffic. However, these impacts could be reduced to less than significant by incorporating mitigation measures. A brief description of the potential impacts on each issue is included in the staff report, and a copy of the initial study mitigated negative declaration and supporting documents was included in the commissioner's packets for your review. In conclusion, the subject property is comprised of three large single-family lots that will be difficult to redevelop individually or yield a well-designed project. The site is located in a collector's street that provides access between Grand Avenue and Baranca Street. and Baranca Street. The proposed project could serve as, will serve as a buffer between the commercial properties located along Garvey Avenue and residential properties. The specific plan has been designed using planning principles that have held value over time. Some of these principles include well-designed architecture, building orientation, and open space landscape areas. The front units are facing Holt Avenue that will be fenced with a 42-inch wrought iron fence with pilasters. The proposed building orientation provides an attractive and desirable site layout. The placement of the front doors facing Holt Avenue does provide a better relationship with the street instead of giving the back to the street. The applicant has attempted to complement the existing fabric of the neighborhood by using similar building materials and design elements. Uh, the scale, form, rhythm, proportions, and materials of the project add to the fabric of the existing neighborhood. In addition, the preservation of the stream bed, riparian vegetation, allows the project to retain the character and unique natural features that exist at the site. The proposal will preserve the stream bed. The stream bed includes the native riparian, um, vegetation, which includes those large oak trees. And the stream bed is a defining feature of the area, starting at the Bridge Creek Independent, Independent Senior Living Community, the Regency Grand Facility, and the Creek Side Residential Project on the north side of Holt Avenue and the Park Like Woodland Setting, which is located on the southwest corner of Oak Knoll Drive in Holt Avenue. As mentioned, mentioned before, alternatively, the applicant could have requested to have that underground. The applicant reached out to the residents near the project site to inform them of the project. Based on the feedback received, the applicant designed a project with no vehicular access from Oak Knoll Drive except for emergency vehicles. There's a crash gate that is located here off of Oak Knoll, and that's only for emergency vehicles. In addition, the, um, the bridge that is being built is, um, is going to be designed, is required to be designed to handle the load of an emergency vehicle, including the traffic and, I mean, um, fire department engines. In addition, um, a staff requested of the applicant to provide a pedestrian gate along Oak Knoll to provide a safe route to school. The school, the, the kids that will live in that project will be attending Mesa Elementary School. So that will avoid having children walking on the busy street of, um, Holt or Baranca. Staff has analyzed the proposal and concludes that it merits approval. As such, a staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolutions recommending approval to the city council of the general plan amendment, number 13 dash four, East Hill Master Plan Review, number 13, Zone Change, number 13 dash four, and certifying the mitigative negative declaration. And also adopt resolutions approving precise plan number 13 dash seven and tentative track map number 72579. Staff would also like to amend some of the conditions of approval as follows. Um, precise plan resolution, which could be find, um, found on page nine, condition H age, um, to re, to install pilaster every 40 feet instead of 20 feet. Also, precise plant resolution, um, condition number 25 on page 15 to be deleted. An email from a resident was also received this evening, um, approximately at 5:00 PM, and was distributed to the planning commission for consideration. The applicant and consulting, uh, team are here to also answer any questions that you may have of them. And that concludes the staff presentation, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have of the project.
We, we do also have a member of our public works department here, Miguel Hernandez, if there's any questions regarding public works of street improvements.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. It's a great job of a lot of hours that, that have been put into this, I can tell. Would we like to offer the opportunity to the developer to, uh, speak at this point?
Well, you may want to ask your fellow commissioners if there's any questions of staff before you open the hearing and do that.
Questions of staff, then. Yes.
I know you covered parking quite well, but I'm, I'm just a little bit fuzzy in my own head here. Do all of the units have a parking pad outside of the garage for, for cars?
No. I'm sorry, no, only 16 units. Now, um, let me show you which units those will be. It's basically, uh, the units right in here, I can't remember, I can't see too well from that, so let me refer to a specific plan. So basically, it's all these units right here along Holt, and the units right in here. That will, a total of 16 units will have a driveway that accommodate two uncovered parking spaces.
Two uncovered, the rest do not.
The rest do not.
Okay. All right. Could you, could you show me on there, each one of the units there, which way the doorway is facing on, on all those? Versus the back of the house?
This will be the front of the, the front door. This will be the garages for these units right here.
Okay.
Um, the same thing goes for here. Uh, this will be the front doors, and this will be the back. And part of it is because of this, um, riparian, um, vegetation that is being preserved. And then, right here, those units, um, the garages are also located right in here. The same goes in here. So basically, the front doors are located where they face...
Towards the greenbelt.
The open space, yeah.
Towards the greenbelt.
Except the units along Holt Avenue.
Okay. So you said there's 16 total units that have a pad?
Yes.
Okay. So the rest of the units, the rest of the remaining 48, if they have more than one car, they'll have to park in the guest parking or overflow parking?
Correct, in the surface parking, um, spaces that are being provided, and basically...
Well, more than two cars. You said more than one car, but they have two cars in the garage.
More than two cars in the garage, then you have to go into the overflow.
Yes.
Okay. Do you know, and maybe this is a better question for the, the applicant, will those guest or overflow parking spaces be assigned to a unit, or is it just the first come, first served?
Yeah, that will be something that you probably need to address to ask the applicant.
Let me just check my notes, sir. And I'm, I think one of the reports says they're going to remove 44 trees, and then I think you said something about 37 trees.
Yeah, a total of 44 trees potentially might be, uh, removed. There's basically 36 oak tree, oak trees and one sycamore that definitely are within the, um, footprint of the development. The other, um, seven might be impacted, uh, because of the drip lines, basically the canopy and the roots. And those might be, they might be able to preserve those, um, if those measurements that we have asked the applicant to do, such as fencing them, um, instead of maybe using, uh, motorized tools, um, that are near those trees, if they can use hand tools, um, for certain work, anything that they can do to preserve those seven trees. So at this point, we don't know how many trees total will be removed, but, but at the most, it will be up to 44. And right now, the tree removal permit will be for 37, and we're hoping that seven trees...
Okay, but some of them will be oak trees.
Yes.
That'll be removed.
Yes.
And that's not a problem with the state on oak trees?
The, the city has, um, the, the city has its own city tree, city ordinance that allows...
The removal of oak trees.
Removal of, yes.
Okay. That's all I have right now, thank you.
Any of the other commissioners? Then, then might be appropriate to ask the developer to come forward if they want to add anything at this time.
You know, we've been working very diligently with the neighborhood groups, property owners, um, and we've been in deep discussions with several of them just before the meeting. Would it be acceptable to take a 10-minute break so that we can discuss some issues with Jeff Anderson and Fabiola?
Uh, see nothing wrong with that, we'll do that, sure. A 10-minute break, we'll, uh, re, uh, we'll come back then at, uh, 7:55.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to come back up here, and we'll start this over again, right?
It's Groundhog Day.
Before you start, we have the city attorney.
Fine Bay, briefly, uh, chairman and members of commission, just like to indicate for the record that there were some brief procedural questions proposed by the applicant. There were no substantive discussions about impacts or, um, you know, project amendments or anything like that that will not be discussed here in the public hearing, uh, portion of the meeting, so we just want to state that for the record.
Thank you. Come up, please.
Thank you for having us. It's a pleasure to be in front of you. And again, staff has been, uh, worked so diligently with us, and we appreciate all their efforts. Fabiola did a wonderful job on explaining the details of the project. I don't want to focus on that, because you've already heard that. I would like to talk about the community outreach program that we did. Um, the community outreach program actually started well before I started with Brandywine. It started in March of 2013, uh, where Brett and Mark went actually door to door. Um, they met with interested individuals and property owners in the neighborhood. Um, and as a result of that, they underwent, over the course of a year, a series of redesigns to address those concerns. That detailed package is contained in the staff report, so you have that if you'd like to, uh, refer to it. Some of the issues that, that did come through, though, were, were very specific. One was the removal and replacement of trees. The second was parking impacts, potential parking impacts to the Oak Knoll neighborhood, land use and density, and visual impacts to the southerly neighborhood. So these were very specific issues, and we're very sensitive to those. Uh, Fabiola, would you bring up the next, um, slide, please? Again, as you are aware, uh, there are 97 sensitive trees on the site. Um, it's important to keep in mind that of those 97, we are removing potentially 44, but we're saving 60% of that. And on top of that, we're going to be planting up to 88 oak trees that are 24-inch box-sized trees, fairly significant. These aren't little saplings. So we absolutely are respectful of, of the city's code and ordinance, and we will comply with that. The next issue that we, um, discussed at length with the neighbors is the issue regarding parking. The site is fully contained. We have in excess of what the parking requirements are in the city's codes. The city actually requires 0.25 guest stalls for this type of unit, and we are providing 48 open parking stalls for 48 units. In addition to the two fully contained garage units per unit, and an additional 32 driveway stalls, which is very significant, we think. We want this to be a holistic, singular, independent community that fits within the context of the neighborhood. So we made every effort possible to maximize the parking while still balancing that with the preservation of the open space. The next issue was in regards to land use. Uh, there is quite a variety of land uses, and this kind of is the transitional piece between the residential rural to the south and the, uh, 48 dwelling units to the east and the single-family, um, traditional residential to the west. This, we, oh, here. There we go. So there's, there is a variety of land uses all the way around. This particular site, we, we looked at single-family detached homes, and it would have ended up looking somewhat like this with a larger footprint covering the entire site. So we did look at that as an alternative. And what kept, kept coming back to us was it's taking up too much of the land, and it was taking too much of the resources. So that clearly was, uh, not the right product for this property. So we figured if we clustered them down into something more meaningful while still achieving, um, a, a housing type that was in demand, that we could achieve the housing goals, our housing goals, and preservation of those open resources. There's actually, can you, um, bring up the site plan, please? The site plan actually contains only a total of 10 buildings. There are only 10 buildings on the entire 5.35 acre property. So we really did study what product would best suit, that literally, there's, it's a combination of three-plex, five-plex, and six-plexes, but there are only 10 of them on the whole entire site. And we, we can understand the sensitivity of the neighborhood, because the houses to the south, if you look at, for instance, the size of the buildings to the south, it's very similar to the triplexes to the north. We have very limited building facades along the southerly edge. The actual setback between our buildings on the west and the houses on Joy Street is roughly 120 feet. And to the south, we have a, also a large setback of almost 100 feet to the houses to the south. To the northeast, to the Spring Creek community, we have roughly 100 feet between the edge of our buildings and the edge of the side-on conditions for the houses. And another thing we, we actually looked at, and we thought this was important, is the fact that we used wrought iron fencing, open fencing with all the landscaping along the Holt frontage, and we used block fencing along the southerly frontage. I wanted to show you a streetscape exhibit that we were able to complete just today. It was crazy, but could you please fast forward? Oh, here you go. The Oak Knoll streetscape frontage will look like this. So there's a great deal of open space on the east and the west, and they will only have two building facades along the southerly edge. The hot, the block wall is six foot high, sir. They only see the front orientation of the buildings, they will not see garages, you know, and the distance is such that, and with the existing landscaping that has to be preserved, and the additional landscaping we have to plant, there'll be a huge landscape buffer along all the edges, north, south, east, and west. So, um, you know, it is an unusual transitional piece. We believe that it is, um, the appropriate land use and building type for this type of product. We believe that we're bringing to the table a fantastic resource in perpetuity, that this open space ravine will be preserved forever, for, for the enjoyment of the entire neighborhood, that homeowners association will maintain the cost of that. They will keep it clean, they will keep it healthy, and they will revegetate it with native plants. So under the guidance of an arborist, a biologist, uh, that's part of our, our condition and our responsibility. And with that, you know, if there are any other questions or comments, you know, we're here to answer them.
Yeah, just regarding that, the biologists and arborists, uh, and the conditions, uh, so will, will there be rules such as, like, dogs and, uh...
Yes.
Taking the dogs down there, because I think that might be a bit of an issue if that were to occur.
Yes, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife would, has, has a preference to keep the ravine free and clear of household domesticated pets. So they actually have asked us to fence off the ravine. We're proposing wrought iron fencing. Um, you know, we know that that doesn't necessarily keep everything out, but it, as evidenced by the project, the Spring Creek community just east, they actually prepared it the same way. They, uh, revegetated their ravine. It's healthy, it's vibrant, there's some fantastic, um, walkways and multi-function trails that surround it. Our intention, though, because this is private and they've asked us to get it off, is to comply with the California Department's, uh, fish and wildlife, uh, conditions. comply with the California Department's Fish and Wildlife conditions.
I think the only way in and out of this complex is in the... Going in and out of the driveway, except for as a pedestrian gate on Oak Knoll. Is that correct?
Yeah. Let me... I just want to clarify. Let me try this again. The emergency access gate along Oak Knoll is strictly for the purpose of fire access.
Right.
The pedestrian gate is strictly for, if students need to get... It's a safe path of travel. We're providing it in response to staff's concerns.
Is that the only two?
Correct. And the Holt access has a pedestrian access at that point, and that is the primary access into and out of the property.
Okay. There is a concern by some of the neighbors there that by having a pedestrian gate on Oak Knoll, it will allow people to park cars on Oak Knoll and use that pedestrian gate to get into the property. So it's not mandatory to have the pedestrian gate there, is it?
Commissioner Holtz, we are happy to work with staff and whatever the city feels is appropriate there. We understand the city, the community's concerns about that. We think it's somewhat unlikely that people would park and go through there, but it could happen. So we're happy to work with the city, and however you guys would like it to us to address.
I guarantee you it will happen.
Well, we're happy to remove the gate.
Okay. The only other question, what is the price of the homes in that complex?
The prices will range from the high $400,000s to the $530,000 range.
Okay. All right. Okay. And then the other question I asked earlier, the overflow parking or the guest parking or whatever you want to call it, will they be assigned spaces to each unit, or will there be some assigned spaces?
There are 16 units that have the direct enjoyment of two additional driveway stalls. Those particular units will own those two stalls. Everything else will be open. There are 48 open parking stalls.
Two stalls or two... Are you talking about pads or actually stalls?
They're actually driveway... It's like a driveway, extended driveway area.
Right. But I'm talking about the other, like, guest parking.
The 48 stalls within the property are open to the entire community, our community.
First come, first served.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick note, we will have a homeowners association and strict CCNRs. The homeowners association will be responsible for self-enforcing the rules and regulations regarding parking and storage of any kinds of vehicles, recreational vehicles, and the like.
Mr. Blackburn?
A couple of quick questions. Talking about removal of the trees, it can be approximately 44 trees, and protecting some of the trees during the construction, can any of the trees that are going to be removed, can they be replanted? I know you had talked about replanting some of the trees, or the trees are just too big to be replanted?
They are. And the construction schedule and the size of the trees are such that we could not guarantee the survivability. But our biologist is here to answer additional questions if you have any.
That's fine. I like the idea of preserving the stream bed. I also like the idea of landscaping the wall on Oak Knoll. I did have a couple of questions. The first phase will be done September 2014. Is that correct?
It'll be starting.
Oh, starting. Oh, okay.
Boy, that would be awesome, but...
I was going to say, you guys are doing a fast job.
Mark?
During the... After the first phase, those will be sold, is that correct? And then the construction for the other phases will continue?
Correct.
So the people will be living in the project while the construction is...
Correct. It'll be a rolling construction process.
And I just had one question on the, I guess it would be the southwest corner where the five-plex is. That's the only piece of property that I saw that the two-story house might be looking down into a neighbor's property on the far left where the cul-de-sac is.
Oh, that's behind, off Joy Street, Mr. Butros and Ms...
It didn't look like only maybe one of the... Has that been a concern? Maybe I should even ask Director Anderson, has that been a concern during this process?
Commissioner Blackburn, we are enhancing the landscaping along all the edges, east and west, and it is actually between the back of the building and the back of the five-plex building, roughly 120 feet. I scaled it off this afternoon myself.
Okay. We've had some issues with...
People like... I understand your concern regarding privacy.
But that's the only area that it really looked like it would be a problem?
We do have a pretty thick hedge that we are going to be planting there.
Commissioner Vias.
My understanding, you're going to fence the whole project?
We are.
You are? So that means that the ravine is going to be a private ravine?
There's wrought iron fencing on both ends, east and west, and also there is fencing on the north side of the ravine and the south side of the ravine at the request of the state agencies.
So can the public, can the other... Can the public go in through there to walk in?
That is not the desire of the California Department of Fish and Wildlife.
No. Okay. Another question I have, you mentioned all about the upkeep and everything. What about the streets? Who's going to maintain the streets?
The homeowners association will maintain all internal driveways and streets.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple more.
Mr. Castellano.
Okay. About the siding or the stucco, the materials, well, it says stucco on some of the pictures. Is it going to be like rough stucco or smooth? Or what's it going to be like?
It's a smooth finish. Sand finish stucco.
Sand finish, okay. And I noticed in one of the pictures of the existing lots, there were power lines above ground. Did... I don't know if this is a possibility, but did anyone ask Edison if those could be moved underground, or is that prohibitively expensive or...
We are working with our dry utility consultant on the relocation of utilities as required by the city. So undergrounding is different. We are working with staff, and I don't have all the information now, but I can bring it back to you or work with staff accordingly.
Okay. And just one more for as far as internet access for Verizon, will that be Fios? Do you know?
There'll be fiber optic.
Yeah, we will have fiber... Oh.
Yeah, if it's fiber optic, it's Fios.
It will be fiber optic.
Okay, not copper?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh. Regarding the conditions, is there... Did you want to go through any of the conditions, or are we... I think, I believe we resolved everything. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, Chairman Medoffe. There were just a few conditions of approval that we needed clarification on, and staff has clarified the majority of them. So I just... There was only one condition or comment that we need to address with our civil engineer and the city engineer regarding raising the existing height of the pads that are proposed by one foot versus two feet. So that is something that we are working on. It just... The condition says two feet, and we are trying to resolve all that right now.
Are we even talking about the issue that maybe you should allow the process to suspend this action today, or what are your thoughts?
Well, I would recommend going forward with the public hearing at this stage, and then we'll... There may be other issues we need to discuss, but we can further discuss those issues after the public hearing. I did want to provide one clarification on Commissioner Castellano's question. All new utilities for these units are required to be undergrounded. So that sometimes includes the utilities that are leading up to the project. So there will not be any overhead lines that will be added or included in this project. They will all be undergrounded.
Good. Thank you.
To be clear, actually, that's included on the tentative track map resolution, and it's on page eight, and is condition of approval X.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Normally, in the procedure which follows, we're going to have a public hearing. We're going to ask for those who wish to come forward and talk for the project, those who wish to come forward and talk against the project, and then we may offer you an opportunity to rebut or to respond to any of those. Okay? So at this time, we'll open...
Chairman, did you want to provide a limitation on speaker's time?
Yes. Yeah. Just going to cover that. Thank you. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing. For those who wish to speak on this particular subject, we will have a time limit of five minutes imposed on your preparation or presentation to us. I have two cards only. One, those who wish to speak in favor, and I believe Mr. Ben Sanchez, you'll have to come forward at this time.
Good evening. My name is Ben Sanchez. I'm at 3119 Joy Street, the cul-de-sac on the west north of the proposed project. It is my opinion that this project is good for the city and for the area. It will clean up the infestation at the back of my property, actually, and the vandalism. So I'm in favor of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak for the project? I have two additional cards here. I have a card from Shirley Buchanan. Doesn't say for or against. If you'd like to come forward.
Good afternoon. It seems like my house, which is on Joy Street, the back end, is the most impacted home in the whole development, where my pool is right there by the parking lot. So I will not be in favor or against this project until I make it explained to me how my privacy is going to be protected.
Eric Donnelly. I hope I'm saying that right? All right. Thank you.
Until just a minute ago, I thought I was going to be up here speaking in favor of the project. I thought the applicant would be asking for an extension. We had quite a lot of discussions just moments ago about changing a portion of this project. It doesn't appear that that's going to occur, so I'm now going to be speaking out in opposition to the project. The planning commission needs to understand that the applicant is asking for discretionary approvals. Every single one of the items that has been requested is discretionary at this board's purview to either accept or accept and recommend to the city council. There's a lot of things that a project like this is to go through, and these developers are good developers. They build a good quality product. I really thought they were going to come up here and ask for something, but they didn't. So I'm going to go through my full presentation to protect our rights. I respect your five minutes. If you wish to cut me off, that's fine, and I'll just give you a copy of what I'm going to present. First of all, the mitigated negative declaration has three items that I'd like to talk about. One is aesthetics. If you look at sections A and C, they are listed as less than significant impacts. Well, if you live in Oak Knoll, you wouldn't agree with that. The plan is presented allows for 28-foot-high structures to be placed only within... I could be wrong here. It's probably 25 feet. I had a very small plan to look for from the property line. That set, which is along the bottom three building and four building, is really like a front yard to the people that live on Oak Knoll. So they're looking at the front elevation, but it is very close. It doesn't feel like a front yard, like you would in a normal subdivision, like many of the surrounding communities. We have two houses on each side of the street, and they each have a front yard. Well, this has a front yard on Oak Knoll and a rear yard facing the development. The second item is biological resources, section E. It's listed as less significant impact with mitigation measures. This is right to your tree question. They've talked about the amount of trees that need to be removed. I understand that for this development. But the mitigation measure really follows what the city's tree ordinance is. But because this is discretionary approval, you can request pretty much anything you want, this is within reason. A two-to-one planting of a 24-inch box tree, 24-inch box tree and an oak tree is really small. It's about this tall. That is not a significant tree. You're talking about taking out 48 or 44 large trees. A better or more significant mitigation measure would be a 48-inch box tree, or... And I trust that they can't relocate the trees because they've told me they can't. So that's within your purview to request in the conditions of approval. I just want to point that out to you. The next is land use and planning, section B. It's listed as a less than significant impact. I will go on to explain how that isn't true. The next thing that you're asked to recommend is a general plan amendment, east hills master plan revision, and a zone change. The change of land use from residential architecture to the specific plan is a tool used by both the applicant and staff to justify projects and their desired layout. This tool can be very powerful. I use it in my own business. But it can also be easily abused. In a specific plan, the staff and acumen may tailor the land use requirements to meet the objectives of proposed development. Look at the proposed and existing land use maps. Could you bring those up? I'm sorry.
What is it you'd like?
I'd just like the map to show you, point something out, the land use. Okay, that's fine. In the staff report, they state the policies of the housing element for the zone change. Provide high-quality housing for current and future residents at all income levels to achieve a balanced community. Well, actually, the current application significantly lowers the quality of some of the current residents along Oak Knoll. I live on Oak Knoll. I'm down the street. It does not affect me nearly as much as it does my neighbors. I happened to be in the development business, and they've talked with me and said, can you talk the talk and talk to the planning commission? So that's why I'm here.
Sir, we have three seconds.
Understand.
If you want to use that map, the map that now...
Look at how these houses sit. I'm going to go right to the chase. You've got large lot subdivision. You've got a small lot, single-family subdivision, the Creekside Development. That development was a specific plan. That same thing could have occurred here. Now, the developer doesn't desire to do that. That's fine. But what we tried to do was work with the developer just moments ago...
Speaker's at five minutes.
...to try to give the effect onto Oak Knoll to look like single-family homes.
Thank you, sir. We exceeded the five minutes at this point.
Okay. I'd like to put into testimony my letter. I'd appreciate if you could give that to them during the discussion period.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Joe...
Look at how these houses sit. I'm going to go right to the chase. You've got large lot subdivision. You've got a small lot, single-family subdivision, the Creekside Development. That development was a specific plan. That same thing could have occurred here. Now, the developer doesn't desire to do that. That's fine. But what we tried to do was work with the developer just moments ago-
Speaker's at five minutes.
-to try to give the effect onto Oak Knoll to look like single-family homes.
Thank you, sir. We exceeded the five minutes at this point.
Okay. I'd like to put into testimony my letter. I'd appreciate if you could give that to them during the discussion period.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Joe Maxi.
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you. I'm a 51-year resident of the city of West Covina. I was raised there, and I've raised my kids there. I've always found the planning commission and the city council to take our interests at heart, and I know you'll make the right decisions. I appreciate it. I've dealt with the representatives of the developing company, Brandywine. Very professional, very accessible. I appreciate that. I support the project to a point. There is some concerns, and one was the concern about parking. I live at 3148 Oak Knoll, which is right in the middle of the development. So it's, I'm right there. Everything looks okay to me, but the issue is about the parking. You know, we were told from day one there would be no pedestrian or vehicle traffic. With that access, pedestrian access, I agree, that could certainly be an issue for parking. The streets closed on one end, so if somebody's parking westbound, they would have to drive to the end and turn around. That would create the traffic, which we don't have now, and of course, we don't want. The other thing is the public access, and staff recommended it for the safety of people or kids going to school. Well, in the 27 years I've lived there, nobody's cared about my safety. If there's a safety issue, how come we haven't done something about it? How come there isn't some kind of a traffic mitigation on Holt? If it's unsafe, gee, you know, I mean, I walk my dog. My neighbors walk their dogs. The kids from South Hills High School, they run constantly down Holt. So if there's a safety issue, gee, I'd like to know about it. I'd like to see the city do something about it. Or is that access gate for overflow parking, which certainly is a possibility? So I support the project. I hope it works. I hope everything goes good, but I do have that concern about that parking and that access gate. If they agree to remove it and do it, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this project? May we ask Brandywine if they'd like to come? I'm sorry, just one moment. Yes. Come forth if you'd like, sir. We need to ask you to fill out a pink card. Oh, all right. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Beatrice Lindsay, and I live at 3212 East Oak Knoll Drive, and I agree with Eric Donnelly on this issue. I am very concerned about our community as a whole. One of the neighbors who's not here, who is not present, who lives on Holt, I feel he should be here in regards to his issues and concerns. But I was for the project. I feel that their intentions are good, but I have a lot of reservations now with regards to what is going to happen to our community. And so with that in mind, I seriously hope you look at Eric Donnelly's presentation and also consider Maxi, Joe Maxi, with his issues because I'm, and Gloria Luis and Joanne Nessie are also here, and I'm here to represent them as well because they have the same concerns as I do with regards to what Eric Donnelly and Joe Maxi have indicated. Thank you.
Any others who wish to speak on this? Would you like to come forward and offer any clarifications or help for Brandywine?
Brett Whitehead, Brandywine Homes. Thank you for having us again. We're happy to be in front of the city again with our next project. We had done, you know, a lot of reach-outs with our neighbors. We have worked on this project for 18 months now. There's a lot of history behind it. The market was completely different 18 months ago. So, you know, we had a lot of constraints. We came up with what we thought was a great plan. Been working with Mr. Donnelly for, you know, past several months. We thought we had some, most of our issues worked out. But he approached us tonight, said, you know, can we meet? We have some concerns. We wanted to have, you know, this presentation to see what your concerns would be too. Mr. Donnelly has asked us, and we have agreed to see if we could juggle some of our units around to lessen the impact on Oak Knoll. He has asked us to remove some of those units and place them into the front of the property. So, you know, he asked us to do this at 6:30. We haven't had a chance to really explore that. I don't know what it looks like from a land planning issue, parking, but we did agree to sit down and see how that could work. However, we're concerned about timing and wondering if there is a way to continue with this for a week, or could this get approved tonight to go to council, and that would give us, you know, some time to maybe work with Mr. Donnelly and his neighbors on some of these Oak Knoll issues. Obviously, the parking is an issue. The pedestrian gate seems to be an issue. We want to work with them. If that's their wishes, they want to get rid of the pedestrian gate, great. We have, I think, prided ourselves on working with neighbors, so we have neighbors that like us. We have neighbors over on Valinda that love us. So I'm kind of looking for direction from maybe staff on if we can get an approval, look at tweaking the site plan a little bit, and going to council, or would this have to be continued to look at tweaking the site plan a little bit?
I can certainly respond to the applicant's question. It's really within the discretion of the planning commission with regard to whether or not it would like to continue this public hearing to a date certain to allow the applicant to work with interested neighboring property owners to try to lessen any perceived impacts. It's also, the applicant appears to have made that request, but, you know, it's certainly within the discretion of the commission to consider the item tonight as well. If it does decide to continue it, our recommendation would be to continue it to a date certain, so that will reduce the impacts on staff for providing public notice and things of that nature. My recommendation as far as amending the project that's before you this evening, unless it's, you know, adjustments to specific conditions or things of that nature, which the commission can give clear guidance on, my recommendation would be to continue the matter.
Thank you. I was just handed another card. I presume someone who wants to speak on this subject. Wait just a moment, please. I want to say that it bothers me a little bit because I asked all those in favor to speak. I asked those opposed to speak. Then I brought up Brandywine's representative to speak, and now someone else wants to speak.
You allow me to speak right now? That's your choice.
I will allow you to speak, but I admonish our audience. Please help us follow a process. So, Mr. Perez, come forward, please.
Rick Perez, 3136 East Oak Knoll Drive. I want to support the dialogue, the neighbors and the developers, because I think we're making progress thanks to Eric, Joe's concern relative to parking and the extra pedestrian gate. I would hope that we look at modifying or reducing the number of units facing Oak Knoll, perhaps having bigger, larger trees to keep the privacy between the two sections of the homes and the new developing homes. That's why I wanted to say, continue the dialogue.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
You could already have asked if there could be a rebuttal. I'm just wondering if I could add one more.
Sir, you've already been provided an opportunity to speak. The rebuttal is reserved for the applicant. So at this time, I believe the commissioner is within his discretion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. And we shall all close the public hearing at this time. So the next matter is our commission discussion. Were there anyone? Yeah.
I think it's a great project, number one. I know the quality of homes that you build and the other projects that you had, and one of the things I really like about this project is there's a lot of greenbelt in here, which that doesn't, seems to appear in most of the projects that come before us. It's like getting as many homes into a box as you can, and so it's a good project. The only thing I've been hearing really is a problem on Oak Knoll, and it seems like the applicant and the residents want to work on this thing, and I think they can. My suggestion would be two things. Number one, I keep hearing about the trees, and I have to agree, you need to put in bigger trees. I mean, it takes too long for these small ones. So I think if you can come back with some bigger trees in larger boxes, I think that will appease a lot of the people. The other thing is with the pedestrian gate, I agree with that wholeheartedly, and I think you can either do one or two things. Either eliminate the pedestrian gate, or if you leave the pedestrian gate there, maybe go forth that on the north side of Oak Knoll Street, it's restricted parking, so cars can't park there. Now, that will also restrict the people that live on Oak Knoll from parking on that side of the street, too, so it's a double-edged sword. So it sounds to me, and I think what I heard, is that staff recommended the pedestrian gate, not the applicant. So if we could eliminate the pedestrian gate and/or leave it there and do restricted parking, I think we're pretty close to finalizing this thing. I don't know where you would move these other houses that are down there without really changing the whole plan, and I'm not too sure what the setback is from the block wall. But again, you'll be facing, if, my understanding is, if you live on Oak Knoll in your front yard, and I know you people have very deep front yards on most of your property on Oak Knoll, so it's not like you're right at the street, okay? And then the houses in the project, you'll be facing the front of the houses, not the garages, if I understand it. So I think we're pretty close to closing this thing if those two items can be met, because I haven't heard any negatives about Holt or Walnut Creek, and it seems like it focuses on Oak Knoll. So that's where I'm coming from. But I think it's a great project, and I think it's a really quality project that will go in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Holt. Any other commissioners wish to speak? Any comments? Commissioner Castellanos?
I'll just add that I agree with Commissioner Holt's, got a few issues to address. Sounds like it's doable, and aside from the issues that have been brought up, I think it looks good. The density looks good. Environmental questions, I think, have been answered, so there's a little bit more work to do.
All right. My comments would follow the same as my colleagues here. I'm a tree hugger, and so I like, I like to see a lot of trees, and it always bothers me when I hear about a tree being removed. I think you've done a good job of showing what your intents are in this purpose, that there may be some revisiting of the size of the trees that you're planting so that they don't take 40 years to grow to some height. And I had the same issue also with the pedestrian access, and it occurred to me that, because we started that way, that there are lots of interactions still taking place, and I applaud the developer for wanting to meet with the community and to get the support from the community by giving concessions, by working with issues at the right time. But I had a distinct feeling that this project may not have been quite ready for this planning commission at this time to take a look at, and I'm wondering if we might propose to carry it over to perhaps June 10th, a date that we already have a meeting scheduled for, and if that would give time for developer and for the community to meet and resolve some of these issues. Director Anderson?
My suggestion would be, is I think that they might want to entertain and discuss that more, but I don't know if there's any other, you may want to finish your comments from the rest of the commission and then ask them that question, what timeframe they might need if, to ask for the continuance.
Okay. I had the impression that we had the discussion. If either of our other commissioners would like to speak, please do.
Well, I have the same sentiments as you do. I don't feel comfortable voting right now on the issue if there's going to be changes made. I would like to wait till, to see the final plans, and then on the general planning also too, I would like to see that before I make my decision on voting on it, if we can go through with it.
Thank you.
Just to go along with my fellow commissioners, I think it is a great project. I've seen the work that you've done. I think the quality of work is great, the plans. If I were the neighbors in the neighborhood, I would enjoy having this project go forth. I think that it's an area that some of the, one of the people talking talked about some of the vandalism, and it's, not that it's blithe, but it, I think it would really help the neighborhood. I like the, I like the plans with the minor thing, size of the trees, and maybe the pedestrian gate. I would definitely be in favor of the project, but whatever, whatever commission decides on if we're going to put it off, I would, if contractor would probably not want to wait a month to come back, I would certainly hope that you'd want to come back in two weeks. That would, I don't think there's a lot of things that need to be discussed between you and some of the homeowners and some of the minor changes. I don't think it takes a month to do it. I'd like to see you back here in two weeks.
Yes. Mr. Holt?
One thing I want to add, I know one of the people in the audience talked about waiting for the general plan, and I think Commissioner Valley said the same thing. I don't think we should hold up a good project like this for the city to wait till they develop the general plan because we don't have any idea how long it's going to take. I mean, it's outdated now, but they're working on it, but to hold up a project like this for the city's problem, I don't think it's fair to the applicant. That's my only comment.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm feeling some consensus for setting this effort tonight aside for some period of time. I don't know how we resolve what that period of time would be.
I think the correct thing to do would be to invite the applicant up to the podium to express what he thinks is the correct amount of time that he needs.
All right, let's do that if we may.
I think the changes are pretty minor. We had met previously and kind of worked out some quick responses and site plans, so we feel like two weeks would be adequate. If we could be back here and present the findings to you in two weeks, that'd be great.
And just, just to provide some information, for the applicant's sake and for the planning commission's sake, you know, two weeks always sounds like a long time, but to make two weeks, we would need the plans basically first thing, daybreak, Monday morning, next Monday morning, and even that is going to be kind of difficult for us because we've got, sorry, four resolutions and specific things, specific planned things we have to look at when the modifications. So I guess I would reluctantly agree to that time period, understanding that if we can't make that, we, as being the teamwork between us and the applicant, then we would come back then and say, we need another two weeks. I think there is a distinct, there's a possibility that's where we'll be in two weeks, but I think depending on what changes they have and what the nature of them are and how fast they get, the earlier they get them in, the better, the better off we have in timing. But that's my thoughts on that.
So we'd like to entertain a motion at this time to-
Continue the meeting to a date certain-
Continue the meeting until-
May 27.
May 20-
Did I have the right date?
May 27.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second that motion?
Motion is second before us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a non-hearing item, study session number three on recreational vehicle parking standards and a review of existing standards. Mr. Anderson?
Perhaps we could just wait a second so we can get set up and while the audience clears the room. Our associate planner, Ron Garcia, will be presenting this, this report, basically a study session on the current standards for RV parking. Did I have the right date?
May 27.
Yes.
Right.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second that motion.
Motion is second before us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a non-hearing item, study session number three on recreational vehicle parking standards and a review of existing standards. Mr. Anderson.
Perhaps we could just wait a second, so we can get set up, and while the audience clears the room. Our associate planner, Ron Garcia, will be presenting this, this report, basically a study session on the current standards for RV parking.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. On March 11th of this year, Commissioner Holt requested a study session to review current standards for recreational vehicle parking in single-family residential zones. The purpose of the study session is to inform the planning commission of those current regulations. Staff included for your review, the recreational vehicle parking section of the code, as well as a handout that we have within the planning department that we pass out to residents for your review. Again, the overall goal of the municipal code is to allow the parking of motorhomes and campers in a manner that does not block access to the garage. Other types of recreational vehicles and trailers may be parked with the approval of administrative use permit. The first goal for such vehicles is for them to be parked so as to not interfere with the use of the garage and primary driveway. The recreational vehicle parking standards include the following. I prepared a visual presentation for you outlining the specific sections of the recreation, recreational vehicle section of the municipal code. The purpose is to reinforce community standards and to promote an attractive residential appearance in the city's neighborhoods as predominantly residential in character. The types of vehicles that are regulated within that section include four types. The first being a motorhome, the second, an accessory recreational vehicle, third, a recreational equipment and trailers, and lastly, utility trailers. The next slides I will go over will provide definition for each of those categories. Now, a motorhome is a motorized vehicle designed for human occupancy on an intermittent basis. Pickup or other truck with a mounted camper would be considered under the code to be a motorhome. Camper shell to enclose a truck bed is not considered as a motorhome or recreational The accessory recreational vehicle is a, is any non-motorized vehicle designed for human occupancy on an intermittent basis, such as a vacation trailer or fifth wheel. And the third is recreational equipment and trailers, and those are designed for off-road use, such as off-road vehicles, motorcycles, stunt buggies, recreational boats and watercraft and trailers to accommodate them. The recreational equipment mounted or placed on appropriate trailer are deemed as one vehicle. Lastly is utility trailer, which is a vehicle designed to be pulled by a motor vehicle, which is used to carry property, trash, or special equipment 16 feet or less in length. Utility trailers longer than 16 feet in length are considered commercial vehicles and are unlawful to be parked and stored. Now, under the recreational vehicle section, there is one option in which is allowed without a permit, and that being is a motorhome or accessory recreational vehicle parked on a side pad. I'm going to let her go into this in detail to describe the side pad concept. The side pad, circular drive, or other allowed parking area that are not part of the driveway leading directly to a garage or carport. The caveat there is that you can park a motorhome in a fully screened interior side, street side, or rear yard by a solid six-foot fence or wall, or view obscuring landscaping. And again, I'll go into that in detail in a later slide. And this is the slide. So this is essentially a site plan indicating the location of the house and the garage. And you'll notice it's outlined in the front as a front yard area. In yellow, as it's indicated here, is a 12-foot wide maximum area, which the code allows for you to park an RV without an administrative use permit process. The second RV, as it indicates in the slide, the second RV would require an administrative use permit, which essentially would mean that it would be parked in driveway. Again, as indicated, the RV cannot be parked in the driveway without an administrative use permit. And again, feel free to stop me if you have any questions as I'm going through the presentation.
Just real quick, you're not allowed to park on grass lawns, right? Whether it be a car or anything, right?
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
That is strictly prohibited.
And in your, in your first definition, Ron, when you were talking about things like camper shells, I wanted to make sure I understood the distinction you were making, is that a camper shell without the truck, that's just sitting there on the property, is not included in your definition, but a camper shell sitting on a truck is. Did I understand that right?
Yes, there's, there's two, and I'll go over those in detail as, as I go along with the presentation. But for example, a camper shell, again, just to cover the bed of, the back of a truck, is not considered a camper. The campers, you see, is the ones that are attached to a truck that can be removed and placed. I hope that answers your question.
But if you, if you take that camper shell off, because you, they can do that, and put it on jacks or stilts, is that allowed?
That is prohibited.
Prohibited?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I, and maybe this is the time to do it, I was waiting till later. If you want, we can wait, the utility trailers, when you described them 16-foot in length or more. And I think you said something, I think you said something that if it was 16 feet or longer, it's considered commercial?
That is correct. And then within the municipal code, and I'll indicate, I've indicated that in the staff report as well, is that anything over the 16 feet is considered a commercial vehicle, which is a prohibited type of vehicle that is, is prohibited from being parked on a residential lot.
You know where I'm going with this, Jeff?
Let's just, utility trailer, though, we're talking about a trailer, not a, not a motorized vehicle.
Okay.
So you're talking about pictures, sort of like a, for lack of a better term, to throw U-Haul under the bus, a U-Haul trailer that you, you rent, and that you, or a horse trailer, that's another good one, that you hook on. It's not motorized. Those are, and if it's over 16 feet in length, I believe what it's saying is that you're not supposed to have those in residential settings at all. Utility trailers are never supposed to be in the front yard, they're not even allowed with an AUP.
So if you have a commercial vehicle that's over 16 feet, that's not allowed either?
That's not a utility trailer.
I know. You know where I'm going with this?
I do, but those are two, they're two different categories, they don't have anything to do with one another.
But it's still considered commercial?
The 16-foot definition is for utility trailer, not for any other type of vehicle. The code specifically says that about, under the definition for utility trailer. So it's not talking about, it's not making a general distinction on all types of vehicles. For instance, RVs over 16 feet are not considered...
No, I know that. Yeah.
And even a Tahoe, or there's other types of vehicles that would be over 16 feet. So it specifically says that the utility trailers, that it's over 16 feet, because the utility trailer by definition is just meant to haul, to haul debris, and it's not ever, and he's, I shouldn't say it's not ever, it's rarely a nicely kept vehicle, because it's not, it's, it's, it's really for hauling debris. So the point, I think, that was put in the code is so that you wouldn't have those stored in residential lots, period.
Okay. Just for point of clarity, the reason I'm asking is, I've asked Jeff, and he's looking into what the, what the code states about parking commercial vehicles on the driveway. Not, not a pickup truck, but a commercial vehicle, stake bed truck, and all that, that people work, you know, and park it in their driveway. So he's researching that, and it just triggered my thinking when he said utility trailer over 16 foot is considered commercial, and it's not allowed. So I'll, I'll back off for right now, but Jeff's looking into that.
Yes, I am looking into it, and I was just trying to make the distinction between our conversation and what we're talking about here, but there is another issue has to do with residential, commercial vehicles parked in residential areas, which is not covered under what Ron's presuming.
Right, okay. Oh, I, I just, my trigger went off when I heard "commercial."
Lightbulb, yeah.
I just had one question, either for Ron or for Jeff. If indeed a vehicle can be pulled into the rear part of the property, what restrictions does the city have, or do we need a conditional use permit if it's out of sight from the front yard? Some yards have real, real wide sidewalks, driveways. Could they pull that vehicle in the rear yard and park it if there was a concrete pad, not parked on the grass?
Good question. Yes, the answer is yes.
Without a permit?
That is correct. As long as it's screened in the rear yard, you can have it without a permit.
The blue area that Ron has on the map is the area that that would be allowed in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just for point of clarification, on prohibited types of recreational vehicles is the utility trailers. Again, they're prohibited from being parked in the front yard, but again, as Commissioner Blackburn mentioned, is that you can actually store it in the rear yard, not have a permit, as long as it's screened fully. The vehicles allowed in the front yard by permit, in this matrix, I'll go over them one by one, is the code allows for a second motorhome camper on the side pad with the approval of administrative use permit. The next slide, again, I'll go into detail with this, with the certain options of applying for an administrative use permit, what sets that threshold in the next slide. The second one is the first rec...
It's the third to the last page in the, in your...
Yeah, there you go. So the first being the second, second motorhome and camper on side pad requires the administrative use permit. And again, as I mentioned it earlier, is that the code does allow, with the required 12-foot wide side pad, you can park your first motorhome without the review and approval of administrative use permit. So to have a second motorhome camper would require the review and approval of an administrative use permit. The second one is the first recreational equipment and trailer on the side pad would require an administrative use permit. And again, the two asterisks there, there has to be a finding. The finding is that only with added finding that suitable area does not exist within the garage, carport, or side or rear yard with access for parking and storage of required vehicles. This is meant for those lots that find it diff, the homeowners that find it diff, have a property layout that, that find it difficult to, to park a trailer on a side pad or anywhere else, and they're only limited to parking it within the driveway. That will require the review and approval of administrative use permit. The third one, the second recreational equipment and trailer on the side pad, again, it has the same finding that has to be made, that would set off, again, the administrative use permit. The first motorhome camper on the driveway, so again, anything within the driveway would set off the review of the administrative use permit. Continuing, the second motorhome, again, camper on the driveway, anything on the driveway will require the administrative use permit approval. Second to the last, the first recreational equipment and trailer on the driveway will require the AUP, and lastly, the second recreational equipment and trailer on the driveway require an administrative use permit. Any questions?
All these are predicated on you still can't block the garage.
That is correct, without, again, with the review and approval of the administrative use permit.
You can block the garage with an AUP?
Yes, because essentially with that added finding there, there's no other suitable area within the lot which would allow them to park it other than the driveway. But, and so that's why the administrative use permit is required, so they're essentially asking for the approval to park that recreational vehicle in the driveway.
But aren't we then really forcing people to park on the street if you do that? If you can't get into your garage, where else are you going to park?
I'm not sure how to answer that, except for, it may be the case, but the city does not have to approve an administrative use permit. If there's a concern with street parking, then we may, we may not approve it. And, and we've had, we haven't had one recently, but there have been times in the past when those have been brought forward to the planning commission for their consideration, and I believe the planning commission has denied some in the past.
Okay.
Ron, I'd like to ask you about screening. You've used that term so nicely.
Yes.
If it were only true. The difficulty is, when we're talking about RVs parked behind, beside someone's home, and you have a six-foot fall, a wall, it doesn't screen it, because I've never seen any RV units that were six foot or less. They're always sticking up two or three feet above the, the wall. And of course, then the, the issue becomes exacerbated when we talk about parking them in front of a house, in a circular driveway, or whatever is allowed, and they're not screened at all. And so that, I'm not sure that I, I'm not sure that the second part fits what you were trying to talk about, but the first part perhaps does. Is, is there any way to provide adequate screening if we're constrained to a six-foot wall?
I agree with your, your summarization there. An RV, you're not going to screen with a six-foot wall unless it's a very small RV. I think the idea is that you've gotten it out of the front setback, and you're now, you have it now in a rear yard area that is more private and more semi-private, at least, that the homeowner has more expectation of privacy in that, that area.
Except that we, we do such a wonderful job, you do such a wonderful job, of looking at neighborhoods and keeping compatibility between homes, and, and making sure that we, that a neighbor doesn't look across into another neighbor's yard and see something ugly. And yet, so many of our neighborhoods in this, in this city have RVs parked beside homes legally, but they're still there. They're still monsters that are, that are not very pleasant to look across the wall at.
I'm not sure exactly how to respond to that, except to say beauty's in the eye of the beholder, and also that about 10 years ago, the city did go through a fairly involved process to determine to come up with these standards. So it, it is a very emotional issue on both sides of the equation, so it, this is what the compromise was, to try to figure out how to protect the, the neighbor, the neighborhoods from encroachment, and still allow some freedom and flexibility to allow these type of vehicles to be parked on the personal property.
I'm not, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but wouldn't it be easier for staff and for all parties concerned if there was something in the code that says you cannot block your garage? And then you don't have to do AUPs, it's just you can't block your garage. I can't understand why anybody would approve it, because you're forcing somebody to park their cars out on the street. So if you just said, you know, you can have all these things in place depending on how your home is laid out, you might not have a problem with putting two motorhomes and all that, but, because you have a big driveway to get in your garage. But if you're blocking your garage, you cannot get in your garage, period. And if we had that wording, I don't know, the rest of your commissioners, you had that wording in it, says you cannot block the garage, it takes care of all that.
Just a comment, would you, what happens to somebody that would park their motorhome or whatever in the garage overnight? Is there, do we have issues with code enforcement? Somebody going out saying, hey, that vehicle's been there for two days, four days, two months?
Yeah, and I think that, you know, every city has different standards, so we, and again, we, we looked at some standards back about 10 years ago. I don't recall what, what a synopsis of the type of standards, but most cities do have to wrestle with those kind of issues, because usually... I would suggest at this point in time, if you have questions on what the current standards are, that's what tonight's about, maybe consider it, discuss it with others, and then if you have some other concerns. I think, I think I'm getting sort of the, the planning commission's idea or concept that perhaps it's not wise for staff to be approving administrative use permits to block a garage, which we could certainly address that by forwarding them or denying... which we could certainly address that by forwarding them or denying them and giving them before the planning commission for, before any approvals were to take place. We don't get very many of those these days, I can't necessarily express why that is, but that's certainly one solution that we have to address that concern.
And I'm really not talking about Commissioner Blackburn, somebody who does it overnight or maybe for a few days or so on, that just park them and they're there. And you know, you go by some of these houses, and it seems like they got every toy and vehicle and trailer and, you know, parked there. It's just an eyesore. I certainly want one next door to me. But, and again, so many people don't use their garage as a garage, but you're still forcing, if you can't get in your garage, you're forcing somebody to park out on the street, and I have a problem with that. Not for somebody who does it for a day or two days or whatever.
What about, I have a question. As far as on the street, I have a neighbor that he rotates his RV from in front of his garage into the street, and it sits there for months. And I've called, and they will, they will, they will go from the city, and they will give him a warning, and then he moves that again, and then pretty soon, he rotates and puts a trailer back in the driveway, moves the RV to the street. So that's illegal, isn't it?
Well, if, first of all, let me express that we're not community enhancement, we're not code enforcement, so we don't deal with those type of issues, those aren't something we're very knowledgeable on, how, any specific item or even in generalities. But my response would be, if code enforcement is addressing that, then yes, you're correct, it's illegal. As with many other types of operational characteristics, which is what you're talking about, we had this discussion last meeting between operational and physical, it's not a physical characteristic, it's an operational characteristic, that always requires constant surveillance by city residents, by staff members, and by code enforcement and other enforcement agencies to make sure that people are following rules. There's no question that that becomes a difficult task. So, I think that's my only response, not knowing anymore about the situation you're referring to.
Any other commission discussion on this?
Commissioner, if people are violating the code, it's not necessarily up to code enforcement, they can go out and be cited by the police. And I used to do it. I mean, when people used to, you know, pull their motorhome in front and then move it three feet, and the next time you talk to them, they go back five feet, you know, and after so many times, you can cite them, you can actually tow it. So, I don't know your exact situation, but it's not always up to code enforcement, I mean, they can be cited and towed if they're violating the code.
Especially if they're on the street.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Director, where would you like us to go with this?
Well, this is just a, this is just informational study session.
Right.
We're just giving you the information that the city has received.
Good. We've done so, thank you. The next item on our agenda is a continuation of oral communications for any member of the public on any item not covered on this agenda. Hearing none? All right. The next thing would be commission reports, commission comments, miscellaneous items. This is a time when any member of the commission may bring a matter to the attention of full commission, that is within the scope of duties assigned to the commission. Any item that was considered during the agenda is not appropriate for discussion in this section of the agenda. No commission discussion or action can be considered at this time. If a commission desires to discuss an issue raised by a speaker or to take an action, the commission may vote to agendize the matter at a future time. I do have one item, I think I have an appointment that I can make to the ongoing design review subcommittee of this commission, and I would like very much to appoint Commissioner Blackburn and Commissioner Castellanos to that subcommittee. Thank you. Any other items that commissioners would like to bring forward?
Yeah, I, two things, I touched on it with Director Anderson about, one of the things I ask him to look into, and he's doing it right now, is the parking of commercial vehicles in a residential driveway. And again, I'm not talking about a pickup truck, somebody, you know, goes back and forth to work, I'm talking about larger vehicles like stake bed trucks and all that, because I've had people come up and ask me, you know, can they park this trucker, because they're parking this truck, maybe two trucks for their business in their driveway? And it used to be, and we used to cite that you couldn't do that, you know, we used to go up and talk to the people and say, you know, you can't do that, and ninety-nine percent of the people wouldn't do it anymore, but some would say, hey, this is my house, I'll park anything I want here, can't do that. Well, we're not too sure what the code says right now, and he's researching that with the PD and all that at this point in time, because I am really against parking large commercial vehicles in a residential driveway, personally. The other thing I ask the director to do, and it's, it won't be on the agenda, and it's just probably going to be given to us in a memo, is look at some other cities as to what the stipends is for the planning commission. The reason for my concern is the last two years, because it's been low, and they cut it in half and all that, but we're hard pressed to go to some of these meetings that we should go to. And, you know, Commissioner Adario got to go, but, you know, we had a pool of funds and all that to get somebody to go, and they're very informational, and they're very good to go to, but I just have a hard time saying, with all that we do, that we should have to pay out of our own pocket to go to these places, once the council members go to these things, and there doesn't seem to be a problem. So I've asked him just to look at some of the surrounding cities, as to what is their stipends, what is their monthly payment, just so we can see where we are in regard to the other cities. And like I say, it won't be an agenda item, it'll just be information to us, and then we can decide what we want to do with it, if we want to do anything with it. Is that fair, Jeff?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other comments? We have a planning director's report?
All that's on the planning director's report tonight is the subcommittee minutes from April twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, so that's all we have there. I did want to take one moment to thank Don for his year's worth of work as a chairman. It's not an easy job to be a chairman, you have to be the referee and the player at the same time, and that can be difficult, and it's also, well, most of the times, like the public we have here right now, they're very pleasant and organized, sometimes we, there's emotional people, and it's hard to sort of keep the peace, so appreciate Don doing that and the example he set for Gerald, and Gerald will get the joy and the challenge of going through it in the next year.
Any city council actions that we need to be aware of?
Nothing to report.
Entertaining a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So said, we are adjourned. We are adjourned.